...businesses and our individuals. I stand for property rights, I stand for the free exercise of religion, and I'm running for judge in Yuba County. I've left some flyers on the table in the front, you could please take one. You can go to our website, thecallisurforjudge.com, and you can see other ways to help our campaign. And I'm grateful that Rick Tubbs is running for Congress, and thank you so much.
It's nine to nothing. If you are familiar with our Supreme Court at all, you know that there are varying opinions on that court from left to right, extreme. So for those nine judges to come together and say in one voice, "This is wrong," it's pretty solid, very little debate there. And I'm thankful Courtney came by to share that with us. All right, well, let's get started then. Thank you so much to Yuba Central Committee, because they did a lot of work preparing for this town hall event tonight. I cannot have done this without you, could not, so thank you so much. I want to thank my wife in the back of over 22 years. There's Christie, talking with Tom. If you have got any chance to talk to her, please, because you will walk away with a smile and a joy in your heart that will last you all the way home, if not longer, and every time you remember her, it'll come back. So it's a gift. And then I have my three kids to hear tonight as well. Holly pulling a baby that is not her baby. She's 18. My son Luke, 16. And Audrey, 14. And a lot of good volunteers wearing Tubbs shirts, thank you all, love you guys. Tonight, I want to start by saying, we're going to give this district some leadership to take to Washington. And I've been a leader for a long time. I'm in the Air Force for over 22 years now. I've been blessed and honored to become a commander of my unit at Travis Air Force Base, C-17s over there. And whether it's by God's grace, or training, or experience, or all of that rolled into one, I have had the chance to lead and do well in that position. And I think one of the reasons why that is, is because as a basic principle to leadership, I think the first thing you need to do for the people you want to lead is offer them a vision of where you're going and a purpose for why you're going there. So tonight, I'm going to start with that, a vision and a purpose of what we're doing. And then we'll get into the details. So first of all, the vision of what we're trying to do. And it's simple. Victory in 2012, elect Rick Tubbs to Congress. That's my vision. And with that, though, it's also to build a team of individuals that come together as grassroots to get that done. Because I cannot do it by myself. This is way too big of an event for me to try to do by myself. It takes a team. And so that is part of the vision, is to build that team and keep it together for the future to do bigger and better things. And with Courtney coming here, there's some other candidates I'm trying to help elect. That's part of the vision, is just not to elect one conservative Republican to Congress, but to get some smart, good people into other offices as well. And that team is part of the vision that I'm trying to build. So as you listen to me tonight, as you hear what I have to say, I am going to look forward to your questions of me, but I'm going to ask a question of you, that if you like what you hear, if what you hear is something you want to see happen, that you join this team and bring your talents, your time, your treasure, to what we're doing and help it get done. But don't do it now. Listen, ask questions, and make a decision at the end. Because I want you on board, because you want to be. All right? The purpose of what we're doing, that's the sacrifice. It always takes some sacrifice to get to where you're going. And you have to know that it's worth it. Now, the purpose of what we're doing is, here's my issues, here's what I'm running on. When you go to cast that ballot for Rick Tubbs in the ballot box this June, and then again in November, the first thing you're going to say to yourself is, "I'm sending Rick Tubbs to Congress to balance the budget. That is my number one priority, my number one issue, where my talents, where my experience lies, and it is the main reason I am running to be your Congressman." A trillion dollars in debt, year after year after year, with no plan to fix it. There is no plan. That is why I'm running to be your Congressman. I want to fix that. I want to change that. I want to balance that budget, so that my children, and yours, and your grandchildren, don't have to do the hard work. And it may be impossible if we kick that can down the road for them. We have to do it now. My generation, us together here, that team to elect me, I'm going to be expanding that team to the entire country, to get that big, bold vision done. Well, how do we do it? Another thing that I'm going to share with you tonight is, as a leader, a leader should understand the problems, should empathize with you on those problems, but not just stay there, not just complain. They need to provide the vision, the solutions to fix the problems. That's what a leader, a successful leader, does. And tonight, I'm going to offer you several specific solutions that I want to do as your Congressman, to give you some red meat that you want. So you know when you pull that lever for Rick Tubbs, that this is what I'm going to go do. I can't give them all to you tonight, because it's, you know, a lot of them. But I'm going to give you some very specific ones, so you can go home knowing which direction I'm going and have a real good feel of what kind of problem solver I will be for you in Washington. So balancing the budget, the first thing we got to do is grow jobs. Not taxes, not taxes. We'll get revenue, we need more revenue to help balance this budget, but to do that, we have to grow jobs. And the way we grow jobs is not by hiring more government workers, but by getting the government off the backs of the job creators. I don't know how many small business owners in the audience tonight?
We were.
We were, yeah, I'm sorry. You bet. My wife and I were small business owners not too long ago, and we know exactly the kind of things the government does to get in the way, to make it more difficult, to grow your business, and to create jobs. And they're doing it even worse now than when I was a business owner a few years ago. So to help our job creators get out there and grow, there's, I call it the three-legged monster. There's a few things we need to do to help them. And one, top one, reduce job-killing regulation. That seems to be obvious, okay? Now, this fellow, John Garamendi, who is your Congressman, who will be your Congressman if I do not win, we had a debate in Yuba City not too long ago, where I said, "We need to cut regulations as part of balancing the budget." And he said, "Regulations are a good thing, government is a good thing." Now, well, now hang on, and we'll get to this curve a little bit. Some regulations I do agree with, some things are good. We need certain limitations. We need government to step in and say, "We need clean water, we need clean air." But the problem is, is we have regulations that are way too onerous, way too invasive, way too expensive, and ineffective. And we need to go in there with a fine-tooth comb and reform that regulation, so that it is not killing jobs and is still accomplishing its intentions. Okay? Oh, that sounds good. Rick, you're appetizing with me, you're making me feel good, you understand the problem. Not good enough. I've got to give you some solutions. What am I going to do about it? Let me tell you about two regulations. First, American Disabilities Act, 88. I believe it is a great regulation. I am all for making society more accessible to our disabled Americans. I think it's a great idea. Yeah, see? We don't think regulations are bad, but what the problem is, is that regulation is being enforced through personal injury lawsuits. And I just read another article on it. There has been several thousand of these personal injury lawsuits against businesses, which means if I'm a disabled American and I walk in and there's not a ramp, or I guess if I take my wheelchair in, and there's not a ramp to get into the restaurant, I can go find a lawyer and sue that restaurant for personal injury. And unfortunately, some unscrupulous people are using this tactic over and over again to extort money from businesses to just settle, because it's too expensive to fight it. You know, this is something that happens if the mirror is two inches too high. You know, the regulation is being enforced in a way that is killing jobs. And it's not making that restaurant any more accessible to that disabled American, it's just killing jobs. And so what I propose on the American Disabilities Act is you remove that personal injury lawsuit possibility there, and you make it between the government and the business. There's a fine, there's a penalty between the government and the business. And then you take that very onerous, job-killing piece out of that regulation. You still get what you desire, what the government is trying to do, you get the accessibility, but you take the job-killing part of it out. That's a solution. Next solution, talking with an Exxon engineer, great guy, smart guy, doing this thing that I'm doing, running for Congress. I have the opportunity to talk to so many different people, some really good people, smart people. This is one of those really smart guys out there that you just scratch your head going, "How is this guy so smart?" Anyways, he's telling me, here's a problem. If you make it to Congress, I need you to work on this. Okay, what do you got? He says, "The EPA comes down and says that you can only have so much heavy metals in your wastewater that goes to open sources." And in my head, I'm saying, "That's a good thing. I agree with that regulation." So what's the problem? He says, "The problem is, the EPA doesn't just give me a limit, they come in and tell me exactly how to remove those heavy metals out of my wastewater, and they tell me in a way that's very expensive and very inefficient. Just let me do it, I'll do it a lot cheaper and a lot better. I'll figure that out. But, but don't tell me how, just give me the limit." That's the role of our government, to put limits, to be the official, not to be the coach or the quarterback. So when I go in and I talk about reforming regulations, it's not about getting rid of all of them and just letting the Wild West occur again. It's about going in and making sure these regulations are done smartly in ways that don't kill jobs unnecessarily, and still protect the American people. So those are a couple of red meat solutions that I'm giving you tonight to walk away from here, that I'll go and try to make happen when I'm your Congressman. Okay, next, cutting spending, the other side of the budget. We have to cut spending. The government is spending way too much money on a lot of things they shouldn't be spending money on. And that list of cuts is a mile long. And I'll be putting more and more on my website as the time goes on, because I'm doing a lot of things, and part of it is updating the website, putting stuff on there, so you can go in and check. So when you read all the stuff, Gina, where are you? Where'd Gina go? Ah, there you are. She told me she read my whole website. Good, well, come back later, because I'll put more stuff on it, I promise. But some specifics, we have to cut spending. And if any of you are familiar with Pete Gingrich and what he's been doing out there, one of the things that he has been talking about, and that I agree with completely, is there is anywhere from $70 to $120 billion in Medicare fraud and waste. Just flat-out waste. You want to cut Medicare, like Obamacare proposes? Well, let's cut the fraud and waste. And then that's up to 25% of the budget. You don't have to cut one service to a senior, one payment to a doctor, you're cutting the fraud and waste, all the criminals out there that are built in your tax dollars. And now you've made Medicare a whole lot more affordable as we go forward, trying to balance this budget. Let's do that first. $100 billion? I mean, we're almost a tenth of the way there to cutting our deficits, just on that one program alone. Your Discover card, or your MasterCard that's sitting in your wallet right now, they got about a percent, maybe a percent and a half of fraud, not 25%. And they have a whole lot more transactions than Medicare does. Why can they be so good and the government can't? I think I answered the question, "in" the question. But it doesn't have to be that way. It doesn't have to be that way. We can elect some people that are smart and industrious and full of energy, that are going to go after that stuff and make government a lot more accountable, a lot more efficient. And so we're not 25% waste, we're closer to that 1%. Okay? That's one program we're going to cut. All right, another program we're going to cut. Who knows the Spotted Owl? Remember the Spotted Owl program? I know, I'm not here to debate that. I'm really not. That's before my generation timeframe, I was off learning how to fly airplanes when all that was happening, you know, starting my career in the Air Force. Not my fight, not something I even want to talk about. However, the federal government put in a program back then to help the lumber industry that lost business because of the regulations that came in. And it was designed to go towards Northern California, Oregon, and Washington. Okay, I'm not here to debate that. Sounded maybe like a good transition program. If the government's going to cut off your ability to make a living, maybe they should help you find something else to do. Okay, like job training, something like that. The problem is, that program didn't sunset after a few years and go to zero. The program grew year after year after year to tens of millions of dollars. And now it's just not Northern California, Oregon, and Washington tapping into that program, it's 43 states tapping into the Spotted Owl program. Your tax dollars. That program should be zero, it has done nothing but grow. And too many programs have done that. We have to go through the book of all the programs and say, "Really? Is that still necessary?" And we have to lean those that are relying on it off, and we have to stop spending that money. We can't afford it. We cannot. They cannot afford it. And that is the strength behind our argument and the ability to go and make that fight and win when we get into the budget and start making those cuts. All right, so let's go down a little bit more. I'm going to give you another clear choice tonight, because the choice is clear. If you like Obamacare, don't vote for me. If you like the increase in your insurance premiums over the last two years in direct response to Obamacare, don't vote for me. I talked to a gal in Vista two nights ago that said her insurance per quarter went from $4,100 two years ago to $7,000 in the last two years. If that's what you like, don't vote for me. If you like the 159 new agencies that Obamacare is adding to your government, don't vote for me. If you like, one more, the 16,000 IRS workers that are going to be hired to implement a healthcare bill, don't vote for me. If those are things you don't like, I ask for your vote. Now, with that, with that though, you have to understand, this is one of those clear delineations, okay? Congressman Garamendi won his special election, down by me, and went to Congress, and I think if not the first thing he voted on, one of the very first things he voted on was for Obamacare. That's a clear distinction, and he still thinks it's a good idea today. I don't. So pulling that lever for Rick Tubbs is pulling that lever to go repeal Obamacare and put some common sense, reasonable reforms into the healthcare system that will make the greatest healthcare system of the world even better, but not by a government takeover and all the onerous things that this 2,000-plus-page bill did to our healthcare system. Okay, and then last, I'm just going to briefly touch on this, and you can ask me questions. But we have been sitting on our hands with a lack of leadership for over 30 years in terms of the California water supply crisis. And it has developed into a true crisis at this point, to where we cut off the water to the Central Valley and really hurt our agricultural industry. And it is simply because we failed, we, all of us, it's all our fault, we're Americans, this is our country, we have failed to do anything to fix it. I'm telling you, that leadership I talked about, I am ready to lead, I am ready to propose solutions, I'm ready to go forward and say, "We need to increase our supply so we can have enough water for Californians to drink, we can have enough water to make sure our delta has that fresh water outflow to save it from becoming a saltwater marsh, absolutely, and we need enough water for our agricultural industry in California to thrive." And the way we do it, okay, that's the big picture, I'm a pilot, so I'm at 35,000 feet right now. Let's bring it down to 25,000 feet. The way we do that is through increased storage, recycling, and some desalinization for the large populations like San Diego, LA, San Francisco. Okay? Those are the ways forward to fix this problem, making sure we have enough water for everyone. Now, let's bring it down a little further. That's going to cost some money. You know, you heard me talk about balancing budgets, right? Absolutely. But some places are going to need a little bit more money, and California is one of them, to fix this crisis. But if we spend it wisely, if we spend it smartly and save the money where we shouldn't be spending it, we can afford these important things for our citizens. Now, I'll offer you a very specific solution tonight, that again, you can go home and think, "That's what Rick Tubbs is going to work on." First thing, let's finish the Auburn Dam. Build that dam, get that extra storage there, make it happen. Why we haven't, ah, I don't know, but we've got to go out there. I've heard some other great ideas, raising the dam at Shasta. I haven't had a chance to look at that one too closely yet, but boy, that makes sense too. Another dam up there at Sykes Dam. You know, there's plenty of places where we can go out and start increasing our water supply. Every winter, I mean, we just had a great rainstorm last week, every winter, we watch all that extra water go out to the ocean, when it could be going up big reservoirs out there for us to use during the summer to make sure we can grow our crops. So let's do that. Real solutions, real issues, problem solved. That's what I'm talking about. All right, let's go to the next one, and that's, that's the purpose, so we can get some of that stuff done. Here's your new district. Switching gears now, we're transitioning, here's your new district. We're up here, right in the middle of all this red, the more red it is, the more Republican they vote, just letting you know. So we're right here in the heart. You see, a lot of it is up north in agricultural areas, which is great. We come down here with Lake, I've got a lot of friends in Lake, Yolo County, Davis, I was just in Davis at a fundraiser, winning Republican votes, the ones that are there, winning Democrat votes. And I'm going to tell you how we do that. And then down here in Salano County, here's where I live in McAbel. A lot of, a lot of folks there that vote Democrat and Republican. What you need to know about this district is, it's a toss-up. It is a literal toss-up. There is no guaranteed victor coming up in this November. It can go either way. And the reason is, is because voter registration does lean Democrat at 42% to 33%, nine points. Just a little, little side note, the race I ran in 2010, it was 59% to 20. I'm feeling a whole lot better about those numbers already. However, this district votes very closely. When you take a look at the Senate race, Carla Fiorina beat Barbara Boxer by one point. Meg Whitman lost to Jerry Brown by seven points, went both ways. When you look at your California Assembly members, the Republicans beat their Democrats by six points. So we're two to one now. And then when you look at the congressional candidates, which I was one of last time, and I think Wally Herger was your representative last time, right? He was one of those candidates? Us Republicans lost by a mere point and a half to the Democrat candidates in this district. If nothing would have changed from 2010 to 2012, if nothing changes, this race will be won by John Garamendi by about 3,000 votes. 3,000 votes. In a race that is probably going to be 200, maybe 220,000 voters. That's what I'm talking about when I'm saying this thing's a toss-up. Now, why am I so hopeful? Why do I think I can win? Why do I, why am I standing here going, "Ooh, we're going to do it"? Let me show you. In 2010, I started with what I call the five snowflakes, of the big snowball and the small snowball, on top of the mountain, my wife, three kids, and me. And we started rolling downhill, and that ball kept rolling with a lot of work and a lot of effort, ended up with almost, or over, 800 people raising their hands saying, "I want to help you, Rick, get elected." Thousand donors to our campaign. And in a district that was very Democratic, against a 36-year incumbent named George Miller, we actually did pretty good. We, it was three to one, Democrat to Republican, however, we only lost, we did lose, we did lose, I must admit, I'm here now. But we lost two to one. We won a lot of Democrat and decline-of-state votes. And let me show you the brightest spot of that campaign I ran last time, in my hometown of McAbel, which is the only overlap from the old district to the new one. In my hometown of Salano County, or home county of Salano County, there, where we have all those voters, in Fairfield and Dixon, the ones we need to win. George Miller in 2008, before I ran, won 54% to 40%, by 5,000 votes. In 2010, when I took my common sense, conservative, constitutional message to the people, we swapped that, and we beat George Miller 57% to 43%, or by 4,000 votes. Now, I'm a math guy, I got my degree in math, and you add that together, in a town of 95,000 people, we swapped 9,000 votes in just the town of McAbel. Nine thou, how many do we need to swap? 3,000. This is why I'm excited. This is why I think we can win. We have a history of success. We have a history of doing this once, and that's why you are here with me tonight. This is how we won all those votes last time. We came directly to the people, and we said, "Here's my ideas, here's my solutions, what do you think? You want to vote for me?" Back to that Obamacare thing? And they said, "Yes, we want to vote for you." So now going into this, where we're so far, much farther down that hill than we were last time, we didn't start with five snowflakes, we started with a whole lot more, and they're building, and they're building more. And like Buck said, we added Yuba to that column of, of snowflakes and that, and that ball rolling downhill. So we're way ahead of where we were last time, when we made that big swap. So this is what's exciting. This is really what's exciting. Now, next one. How do, how did we win those votes? And my story is a little bit of why we can win those votes. I already introduced my family to you, and the most wonderful family in the world. Come on, argue with me, go ahead. I am, have been in the military for 22 years, my wife and I were married the same weekend I was commissioned in the Air Force. And I have served my country, active duty for nine years, and then the reserves down at Travis Air Force Base for the next 16 or 15, 14 years, whatever it's been, seems like forever. Anyways, and you're going down through there, got, I've been to Afghanistan, I've been to Iraq, all that good stuff, I know what it's like to go into combat, I know what we're fighting for over there. And it's something that I don't talk much about, but it's something you need to know about me for what I'm going to say in just a second. I applied for United Airlines out of San Francisco, that's my civilian job. And then got the math degree, been to a lot of Air Force education, learned a lot of strategic thinking, which has helped me in not only campaigning, but trying to solve problems. The Air Force has taught me to be a problem solver. The Air Force has taught me to get results, that's, what's important about that. And then my wife and I have run a property management and development business for a while, that we ended up having to sell after the war started and I was gone so much. And then the most endearing thing to you tonight about me is, I have never held political office before. Now, in this story of who I am, my experiences, I am an normal guy, I am just like you. I, you know, this morning, I woke up in my pajamas, didn't brush my teeth, and, you know, didn't want to get out of bed as early as I did, I am just like you. But I have had some extraordinary experiences that have uniquely qualified me to do this job. When we talk about how we win Democrat votes, and decline-of-state votes, and Republican votes for that matter, there is this kind of stereotype or barrier between a Republican and a Democrat in this state of California. And so often, I knock on a door, and I say, "Hey, my name's Rick Tubbs, I'm running to be your Congressman." But party, Republican, and a door starts to slam. So wait, wait, hey, wait, why are you doing that? You're American like me, right? I go through my story. I grew up on welfare. Not proud of it, I'm not ashamed of it. That's my story. I grew up on welfare. And I don't mind letting people know that, so they know I know what it's like. Next, as an airline pilot, I'm a union member. I'm not anti-union. I hope I don't lose any of you yet. I'm not anti-union. And now, all of a sudden, that Democrat, decline-of-state, scratches their head, and they go, "Are you sure? You're Republican?" "Yeah, I'm Republican." And now, and then one more thing, that military background, I tell you what, Vietnam vets, raise your hands, please, Vietnam vets. You guys went through a lot of hell during the war, and unfortunately, you went through a lot of hell when you came home. Because of the hell you went through back home, I have gone through heaven as a military member. I have been treated the best by the American people, because they learned their mistake that they made with you. And having that military background, I give the respect of all Americans. And something that is in my heart, something that is who I am, when I went to combat, when I went to Iraq and Afghanistan, I put my life on the line for all Americans. I didn't care what party you were in, Democrat, Republican, I didn't care. Who I am, what I really did was, I put my life on the line for every American. That's in me. And when I talk to those And when I talk to those on the other side of the aisle, if you will, I really feel in my heart I'm talking to a fellow American, and I don't have any of that animosity going back and forth. That kinda stuff now breaks down the wall. And now, when I start talking about conservative, common sense, constitutional solutions, they start listening. And it starts to make sense to them. I find a shared goal that we're trying to get to. Oh, eventually, we might disagree on a few things on how to get there, but hardly anybody disagrees with balancing our budget. Hardly anybody disagrees with spending your money responsibly up in government. So, when I get through that barrier, and we start talking about solutions, we start winning votes by the thousands. That's why we have this tremendous opportunity at this time to actually, in the state of California, replace, to replace a liberal Democrat, John Gairminde, with a conservative Republican, Rick Tubbs. All right, I have spoken about myself enough. And now, I'm going to turn this over to you all, because I tell you what, as I'm trying to be your representative, as I'm trying to go into Washington and be your voice there, I learn more about what I should be doing in my job from your questions than I ever do anything else. So please, tonight, ask your questions, I'm ready to answer, ask about anything. And, uh, if we disagree, I'll tell ya, if I don't know, I tell, I'll tell ya, but, uh, if I got an answer, I'll give it to you. So, I will start over here, sir.
Okay, how are we gonna get under, out of, out of control of China? They're almost completely, have our, our economic system in control, forty-five percent.
Do you have any specific examples you're talking about? Cause I have a couple ideas I'll address, but what are you talking to specifically?
Obama has made a deal with, with China for a stimulus from China. In the process, they've actually collateral all our BLM lands throughout the United States. Now, that's not good. That means if they ever get control, they're gonna come using. Plus, the, all the loans we're losing, and China is saving the world. All right, now, what are we gonna do to get away from that? Because if, unless we do, we're gonna go to the end before too long.
Yeah, and the question, if you didn't hear it back here, is, you know, how, how are we gonna deal with this China influence? I mean, control is the word he used. And really, whenever you are the person borrowing, the person borrowing, loaning to you is the master, right? I think that's in the Bible. So, and it's true. And if you remember back in the fifties, when England was trying to have their way over the Suez Canal, and America said, wait, we want it our way, and England said, no way, we're doing it our way. Well, we have a lot of English debt, so you're gonna do it our way. And sure enough, England followed our lead because of the debt. And this gentleman's concern is, is China getting into that position with us? And yes, I am very concerned about that as well. And the way we solve it is by first, balancing the budget. Back, let me back up a second. You know that almost, if not, and I haven't seen the latest statistic, but the last time I looked at it, not too long ago, almost half of our debt was foreign-owned. And China was the major owner of that foreign debt. Which means that when you go to work and you pay your taxes, you know, you go to work and work hard, if you're manual labor, I've done a lot of that in my life, that's hard work. If you go in, whatever you're doing, and you see that tax money coming out of your paycheck going to the government, some of that money is going to other countries to pay for their schools, their roads, their military, their healthcare. Your work is going over there. And I say all that to let you know that I think that is a terrible, terrible place that we're in. One of the reasons why I am so passionate, so motivated to balance that budget, that's the first step. We gotta balance the budget. Once we've balanced the budget, now we get our house in order, and we're not as vulnerable. But there's still, by the time we balance this budget, there's gonna be twenty trillion dollars in debt. Astronomical, I mean, this, you don't turn this ship on dying. It's gonna take a little while, we're gonna have to borrow some money as we're balancing the budget. And it's gonna get, and under my plan, which is a pretty aggressive, pretty good plan, twenty trillion dollars. So now, we start paying that off. And the more we pay off, the less control our people that loan us money have over us. That's the first way to get there. So we get balanced, hold the spending in line, so we have a surplus, start paying down that debt. Under the Rick Tubbs budget, which I can't wait to talk to Paul Ryan and start working on this together, hopefully. Yeah, yeah. Under the Rick Tubbs plan, which you will hear about, it's balanced in five years. We get a surplus, and we pay down that twenty trillion dollars over thirty years, it would be like a house mortgage. And so our children, and their grandparents, won't be passing on all that debt to their children eventually. Now, a second piece of what you're asking about is we're losing jobs to China, right? Big time, manufacturing jobs, producing stuff.
And they have unions either.
Well, and, 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 yes, don't, don't let me lose your vote, cause I'm a union member.
I know.
Bear with me. And unions aren't the problem in this area. The problem is, is that three-legged monster. I am absolutely a free trader, uh, yeah, free trader, absolutely. Because I will put American workers, American ingenuity and productivity against anybody in this world, and I know we'll beat them hands down. The problem is, is we handicap ourselves. We put a self-imposed tariff on our goods, back to that three-legged monster, through excessive regulation, taxation, and litigation. We've gotta work that down and make America competitive and the place to make things. Get the government off the back of the job creators. Make America where we wanna grow manufacturing jobs, grow factories, do things here. Because unions and all that stuff that make our, our wages higher than the Chinese, labor is not the major cost of business. It's all that other stuff. Americans are worth the money they make. They're worth it. What's not worth it is the gu, is the cost of government on those products. So two ways to get into your issue there, sir, is one, we gotta balance that budget, stop borrowing the money, and start paying it off, and do it now, because we are getting close to where it's becoming a crisis. And we make America competitive to where the jobs are coming home, and really do it. Not just talk about it, not just say, yeah, that's a good idea, go in there and fight for it and make it happen. And I'm going to be one of many, and there's a lot of voices there now, not enough of them. John Gairminde is not gonna be on that side that I'm talking about right now. I will be, I will add my voice to that. I will be one of four hundred and thirty-five, but that's better than one of three hundred million right now. So please, please, get me there, and is, does that answer your question?
Well, there's, there's a, in Bay Area, there's a Chinese company building a bridge, approving a bridge. They're using their own company, their own people, because they can do it cheaper than we can, and that's scary.
Yeah, and, and that's an issue, you know, I have somebody, well, I'll let me put myself in the position of the, the elected official making that decision. Hmm, hire American, an American company that's gonna cost more tax dollars for the same product, or hire a company that's gonna spend those dollars more wisely and get it done cheaper. And I don't, that, that elected official shouldn't be in that position. The American company should be competitive with the Chinese company, and that's what we gotta get to. And that's how we will fight that. Very good. Uh, yes, this one, and then, oh, you wanna piggyback on that, all right.
Well, one of the reasons also, the Chinese got that, because the American companies didn't have enough certified welders to do the welding. That's, the American manufacturers would, uh, cut their price to be competitive with China. And they would've gotten to work if they had the certified workers.
Yeah, so there you, I mean, there's a lot of issues there, but you make America competitive. Uh, sir.
Yeah, what's your feelings on how we should deal with Iran?
You're asking a guy who's been to war for ten years. A guy who has spent a lot of time away from my family, a lot of exhausted days, and then, you know, and, and God bless those ground pounders. Okay, I'm Air Force, I fly, I have never faced the nightmares they have, and I will never even try to put myself next to them. However, as a pilot, one of the things we go through is exhausting twenty-four-hour days on top of each other, and I have never been more exhausted, and I never wanna ever be that exhausted again, uh, doing that job. And you're asking me what to do about Iran? Ugh, I want, just come home and go to bed. All right. The first thing about that area, and it is a principle of mine, is Israel is our friend. They have been our friend since nineteen thirty-eight. And we have to stand next to our friends. That doesn't mean our friends always do the right thing, and that we can't say something about it, but it does mean Israel's our friend, Iran is not. Now, I can't say everything I know, because as a commander in the Air Force, I got what's called Red in. But I can tell you what's on the news and about history. Iran's dictator has said, we need to wipe Israel off the face of the earth. But, uh, and he has said all kinds of things about Israel that just makes you a little afraid. But if it's just some guy out there saying things that he can't follow through on, you can ignore him. If Iran gets the nuclear bomb, now all those threats become possible. And I, and Israel has the right to defend themselves, just like we have the right. Just like if Israel was threatening to take over Iran, Iran would have the right to defend itself. So we have to support Israel in that, we have to do everything we can to let Iran know that we will not tolerate any such behavior that would threaten our friend Israel for a lot of reasons. And we have to stand next to our friend if they indeed take what they think are appropriate actions to defend themselves against this growing threat. It is something very difficult. I do not wanna put boots on the ground, I don't wanna take over Iran, I don't wanna have another Iraq in Iran. I don't wanna see that. But if this thing gets to the point where this dictator and Israel come to blows, which is the escalating rhetoric, then we need to stand on their side and take care of this in, uh, in the lead. The, the quickest way possible. Boots on the ground, I don't wanna see that. Sir.
Should we secure Israel and drive the Palestinian, Palestinian people out of their homeland?
Yeah, you know, and that was one of those tough things. I, I really do, after looking at it as, and I'm not an expert, but I've looked enough to be able to say something at least intelligent on it, I really do believe in the two-state solution. I really do that believe in a lot of what Israel has offered across the table, and what other US presidents, Jimmy Carter, Bill Clinton, to name a couple, have negotiated and tried to make this two-state solution work. I mean, the Palestinian people know they need a place to go, I know there's a lot of issues there. I believe in the two-state solution, I'd like to see it brokered, I know Israel has offered a lot to make that work. And America can throw its weight behind that and help it happen, but until you have the powers on the Palestinian side agree, and as long as they say they wanna get rid of Israel and own it all, you gotta fight the good fight until you can get there. But I, I don't wanna see Israel just push them out and, and become refugees in the world. I'd like to see this two-state solution. Tom.
What do you think of Agenda Twenty-One and how do we stop it?
That's a hot topic lately, isn't it? I tell you what, let me tell you a couple of things on that. Sustainability is not a bad word. Oh, oh, wait a minute, guys, you sure you're Republican? Sustainability is something I use as a commander with my reserve unit, cause reservists are volunteers. And I am, and with the war going on, I am asking for my reservists to give me every bit of effort they can give me to go fight that war, but then I back it up, and I say, do it in a way that's sustainable. I don't want you to burn yourself out in a year from now, quit. I want you to give me everything you got in a way that you can sustain it. So with that, sustainability is not a bad word, cause I use it. Okay, second, Agenda Twenty-One. The UN is, there's some issues, okay? As an aircraft commander in the United States Air Force, it is my job to take care of my crew as I fly a mission around the world. I got to accomplish that mission, but it's my job to take care of my crew. As a squadron commander, it is my job to take care of my squadron and make sure that I fight for their best interests. And I'm competing with other squadron commanders, right? As your US congressman, it is my job to fight for my district and my country. Because at the federal level, I represent everybody in, in the United States. My votes affect everybody in the United States, and I have to think about what's best for America, not the United Nations. Now, let me tell you something about the United Nations, though. I mean, a lot of people are very upset, wanna abolish it, not, you know, do all that stuff. And I understand your frustration, I understand that. But let me tell you something, as an air, as Lieutenant Colonel in the United States Air Forces, who has been, uh, had to study this, the UN, its intention is for countries to come together and discuss things so they don't go to war. I support that, absolutely support that idea. Let's get together, and we are the big boy on the block in the world. And we get a lot of what we want done through the UN, but it doesn't make the news like the times when we don't get what we want. So I do not see the UN as useless or something we should get rid of, but I do say that when something comes out of the UN that is opposed to US interests, like our constitution and property rights, like Agenda Twenty-One, then no, absolutely not, I'm not going along with that. It's gonna be my job to look after my district and my countries. And Agenda Twenty-One is simply the fight against it. The way we stop its progress in the wrong direction is by defending property rights as a constitutional right for American citizens. And as you face these sustainability plans that are count, thank you very much. I didn't mean to cut you off. But as you face them, you stand on property rights and the constitution to say, no, that's not the right way we do it in America. The, the way we do it according to the constitution is much better, and we're gonna stick with that. Uh, you had to change that very long.
Um, what do you think of government taxation on internet transactions?
Yeah, you know, that's coming up lately. The internet's free, uh, right now from taxation. And I, I am gonna tell you, this is one of those I-don't-knows that I have for you. I do know that as I go and I start to put together the Rick Tubbs plan, there's going to be sacrifice on all of our parts. All of us rely on the federal government too much. And all of us are going to have to give up something as we go forward. But the idea is, is we go forward as a nation, we do it together, it becomes a national movement. It's a thing of pride, what did you give up to make sure the American dream's safe for our kids and grandkids? Well, here's what I gave up, and you wear it as a badge of honor. Internet taxes.
Don't intend to give up any freedom for it.
Well, freedom is different, that's not reliance on the federal government. I'm asking you to give up reliance on the federal government, which gives you more freedom. And I'm gonna talk about that one, this is where I'm gonna talk about my freedom card. I'm gonna tell you, I am open to many different ideas. I do not know the consequences of a tax on internet transactions. I love buying stuff on the internet and not paying that tax, absolutely.
Remember, I just paid a big bunch of taxes on a transaction for a classic car park for my sixty-four El Camino, and I was just flabbergasted, I'm going, whoa.
Yeah.
It's something that came in in January.
Yeah, but as we move more of our economy to the internet and less of it to the brick-and-mortar stores, you know, you know, in the beginning, it was good to help motivate or incentivize it to get going, but at some point, it becomes a part of normal commerce, and we gotta think about taxing. All right, let's take a look at this freedom card to address your freedom back there. This is something I came up with, and I hope it's in every kid's textbook in high school within the next ten years. Cause this is what I call American government, or what it should be, what it has been. Down here, you have size of government, and over here is no government at all. Up here is your freedom, how much freedom you have. If you have no government, you have no freedom, it's just tyranny of the strong, chaos, can't have that. Some government is good, they protect your rights, they order society. Your freedom goes up as you have some government to protect your rights. Right up here, right at the top of this curve, right at the best place to be, is what our constitution did, where you have the most amount of freedom for the least amount of government. That is what American freedom is. That is what has made this the best country in the history of humanity. That is what we should be striving for. Now, as you continue to grow your government, your freedoms start to fade. And you have governments over here like China, Venezuela, that are really close to the bottom of the curve. You move up a little bit, you're getting a little freedom back, but still a lot of control. You have places like Europe over here. Now, right now, unfortunately, I believe my country is over here on the curve someplace, going in the wrong direction. We have fallen from where we belong. And there are very few promises I'll give you, because when I give you a promise, it's something I'll stick to. If I ever break one of my promises, you vote for the other guy next time, and don't vote for me again. This is one promise I'm gonna give you. I will never, ever, write or I will never, ever write or vote for a piece of legislation that takes us this way out of curve. And my expressed intent is to get us back on top where we belong for this American-style freedom that has made us so great. So when you talk about giving up stuff, it's about giving up this and gaining this. It's not going backwards, it's going up. Don't let anybody tell you to. All right, Herb, what do you got? And then we'll get to Marshall.
On that note, what would you do about the NDAA? And what would you do about the recent bill that was passed or executed over about noble public protests within so many feet of the Secret Service?
I have not heard.
They just shut down a Tea Party thing in Texas. And the Tea Party said, "No, we're not gonna, you're not gonna get rid of our fifth amendment right to peacefully assemble." So the Secret Service shut down the entire road from the airport to the hotel.
Yeah, it's interesting. And I actually have, let me, let me separate those two issues. I actually have some experience with this stuff, being in the military. You know, I mean, we, in the military, it's all about reducing risk. You know, our job is about taking risks. I mean, we put our life on the line, like I said, our job. So we do a great job of mitigating all the risks we possibly can to, you know, come home at night, right? So when you talk about the Secret Service doing things like that, they're trying to do the same thing. They're trying to mitigate risk.
No, it's an anti-protest.
Well, and that's, and that's what I'm getting to. I mean, I always assume the best, or I try to sometimes, I know. But, so if, if that is what they're trying to do, is mitigate risk, we live in a country where freedom is our, our desire, where it is what we want to be. And with that freedom, there is some extra risk. You can live down here and have not much risk in your life. If everybody's locked in their homes when they're not working and we have martial law, there's a lot less risk of terrorism. But we don't want to live that way. And we do have to take some risks, do have to put extra energy and extra effort into things to make sure that our freedoms are protected. So this, I don't know about this restriction on protests within the Secret Service. That's the first I've heard of it.
It was an executive order.
Oh, another one of those executive orders.
It was also passed through Congress and recommended it.
Yeah, so I do understand the not, the need for security, but it has to be balanced against our rights and our freedoms, which will lead me to the NDAA. And you have to balance it. And you have to take some risks so we can live as free people. And that is just part of being American. I don't want to comment, you know, yay or nay on what it was because I don't know limitations. But that's my philosophy going forward. When you talk about the NDAA, I mean, some good people voted for that. I mean, anybody knows Alan West? Heard of him? Yeah, that guy in Florida? He voted for it. So it makes me think, what's in there that made him vote for it? But here's what I know. If you are an American citizen, you have rights by the constitution. And in that NDAA, as an American citizen, being held indefinitely without being charged or having your chance to defend yourself? No, that is not America. That is not the right way to go. We are in a different war now against terrorists. They don't wear uniforms. They aren't part of a country. There will be no formal peace treaty when this is over. The best we can do is grind them into the dust and make them unknown. That is the best we can do with them. And we have to change our tactics and we have to fight this war at a different level. I understand that. But when it starts to broach the fundamental rights of American citizens, then we have lost a philosophical war that once again has made this country great. We must stand on our rights. We must protect our rights. And we must view the things around them to make sure that this country remains great. So NDAA with the idea of holding Americans indefinitely? No, not for it. Sir?
Back to the budget for a minute?
Yeah, my favorite.
You said you were looking forward to getting together with Ryan on the budget. Does that mean you'd vote for the Republican budget at this point?
And I was asked that earlier. And I have, I'm campaigning. And this just came out.
Right.
I will not be the kind of congressman that says, "I'll vote for something or not vote for it unless I have a chance to read it." You know, and I started reading the, 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 the. And you talk about the healthcare bill. You know, I didn't have to read all 2,000 pages to get to no. So maybe I won't read the whole bill until I answer no. But before I say yes or no, if I would vote for it, I want to know more than that. But what I do understand of it, from the little bit of time I've had to look at it, simplifying the tax code is a philosophy that I am absolutely for. When we have 20,000-plus pages of tax code telling you how we're gonna pay taxes, that is not conservative. That's very difficult. It's not efficient. It's the wrong way to do things. And what I understand is Paul Ryan is trying to simplify that tax code very much. I'm for simplifying the tax code. When it's talking about cutting spending and balancing budgets, absolutely, that's what I'm trying to do. I want to read the details about it because I know I'm gonna put a lot of effort into trying to make this happen. I know a lot of people have done a lot of effort, Paul Ryan being one of them, trying to do similar things. So I want to add my voice, my efforts, my expertise to that effort and hopefully come up with what my goal is, is to balance that budget in five years. To balance it tomorrow, but the pain and suffering it would cause would just not be worth it, right? I mean, you could cut my pay in half as a military guy or cut me off completely, but now how much, you know, how much am I gonna do? You know, how much can I do? So that's why I looked at it and said, "Five years with some really reasonable cuts, some assumptive growth of about 4%," which we do those things about jobs, I think is very reasonable. We can get to a balanced budget in five years and keep going. It takes discipline. And what Paul Ryan is trying to do is give some discipline. So again, I agree with that. I'm sorry I can't give you a definitive answer.
That was the answer I was looking for.
Yeah, but I will not say yes or no unless I know for sure. A lot of what Paul Ryan is trying to do, I absolutely support. Yes, ma'am?
And also, for a question, what would you do about President Obama sending our troops off to war on international community, it's okay, instead of Congress, it's okay?
Are you speaking about like Libya? You know Libya was one where we went?
That was one, and it was something you talked about.
Yeah, and her question is, is what about a president, in this case Obama, but a president in general sending our troops into harm's way without congressional approval? And there's a War Powers Act that gives the president 60 days to respond to crisis. I like that. What I don't want is that we have gone to war, whether it's Iraq, Afghanistan, Persia Gulf, Vietnam, Korea, Grenada. Well, Grenada was short. I'll stop there. We have gone to war with a quote-unquote congressional approval, but not a declaration. We are so afraid to declare war because, well, the last time we did it, it was World War II, all or nothing, unconditional surrender. That's what war became. No. These things that we're doing, people are dying. Bullets are flying. These are wars. And to declare war, and this is what I would like to see in response to your question. If we're going, if the president says, "We need to go into harm's way with our military," and the constitution gives a declaration of war to Congress, right? You gotta do that because we are the representatives of the people. The only successful wars we have are the ones that the American people are behind. There was no question about World War II. And when we started some of these other wars, good patriotic Americans all behind it. But then it started to wane and we had some difficulties. Put a declaration of war on the table with a specific goal. Authorize it with overwhelming force. Define your exit strategy. Give the president and the generals the ability to amend that as necessary because war, things change. Trust me, I know. However, go into it with a declaration. And don't allow it to continue. This, this, when presidents decide to send troops in harm's way, past the 60 days of the War Powers Act. And we have to be representatives of people. We have to be able to stand up and say, "Mr. President, you're doing this wrong." And then get that changed. And do you cut off the funds to the troops? Gosh, I was one of them. I held George Miller to task when he voted to cut off the funds to the troops. And I said, "I'm one of them." But you gotta pass things that, you know, I don't know if you call it censuring the president, but you have to say, you have to follow the law. Here's what we're doing. Follow it. And be a leader and stand out and say it. And if you can't do it with some sort of parliamentary decision, you do it with the will of the people. The president still responds to you. And so we do it now. And that's kind of a squishy answer, I'll admit. But, you know, those are difficult things. And like I said, I've been in harm's way and I don't want to see funds cut off and stranded, you know. What I said to George Miller is, "It breaks the mind. The patriots of Valley Forge with their bloody feet and banditism and no shoes. I don't want to see that happen to my troops today." So we have to support our troops, but we have to hold our president accountable to the laws. And we, as representatives, have to represent the voice of the people. Declaring war is not a bad thing if it is justified. Don't be afraid of it. Let's do it. Do it the constitutional way and go forward. Sir?
Are you planning any debates with your rival, Congressman?
We've had several. And we had one right here, as a matter of fact. And we have two more that I know are on the books, April 10th, for the Fairfield, Sassoon, Vacaville Chamber of Commerce at the Travis Federal Credit Union at 6:00 PM. And then we have another one, April 11th, in Dixon. And I think that's gonna be at the Chamber of Commerce at 11:00, but they're still working details. Those are the only two that I'm aware of that are on the books right now. And right now, I mean, we've debated, we've had several forums already. And right now, I'm trying to do these town halls and get to the voters. So I'm, I mean, I'll be happy to show up to those two, but right now, I'm trying to win votes by talking to you like this. So I don't want to spend too much more time. We, you know, there's plenty out there. And we have made a contrast between us. And it's, it's up to you, the voter, now. Now we just gotta get that message out. But two more will do. And then I am looking forward to debating John Gervendio in summer. And let's see.
What do you think about freedom of speech? And it seems like you see a lot of police raining down on the people who go out to protest these days.
Yeah, and I'll tell you a little story on that. I, my first sergeant is an Oakland cop. And she tells me stories. Well, the Occupy Wall Street thing, you don't see on the, you see some on the news. She tells me stories that are just horrific about some of the activities of these people. And again, it's that fringe. I mean, she says the majority of those people are law-abiding citizens out there trying to say whatever they're trying to say. She says the majority of them. But there are some horrible factions inside it. And they're breaking laws. They're doing damage to people's property. And the police, it's their job to crack down on them. Sometimes I think in the press, where it's this anti-authority mentality, they show the police in the wrong light. Oh, my goodness. My, my first sergeant, there's a picture in the news. This is how bad it gets. There's a picture in the news, she's out there doing her thing for the Occupy Oakland. And she bends down to scratch the ear of a cat that was left in one of the tents. And the picture's caption was, "Why isn't this cop doing her job taking care of the protesters?" You know, I know you get a picture of her with the baton out, you know, trying to take care of the bad guys. And it's, "Oh, look at the brutality of the policemen." You know, they, they don't have a chance. Freedom of speech is the First Amendment. It's a right of Americans. That is what gives us voice. And really, another thing that makes this country great, that we have the ability to say our opinion and have a voice and contribute to the debate in the market of ideas. Absolutely, I support the right to speech. When people are protesting within the law, appropriate laws, back to you, right there, it cannot be shut down. We can't let it happen. And if the authority oversteps and tries to squelch freedom of speech, we need to address it and make sure it's not. Did you have a follow-up there?
Yeah, like a hate speech laws or what they call a hate conference. If you speak against somebody, it needs to be held by you for that.
Yeah, I am not a big hate crime. A crime's a crime. And to try to dump extra penalty onto a crime because somebody had some sort of different motivation? I don't care why the person, you know, killing me or robbing me. It's a crime. And that extra stuff, I think, is emotional. And I think it's something that we've done to try to make ourselves feel better. But crime is a crime. There is no room in our society for prejudice. There isn't. There is no room for discrimination in our society. Those are laws we can pass and enforce. And there is no room in our society for crime. We need to enforce the law. Now, should we have the ability to punish somebody for their thoughts or their emotions? No, I don't agree with that. What else you got? Yes?
What we're starting doing as adults, we now have a literacy rate in California that is appalling. Our kids have no idea about how government operates, what their rights are. When I was growing up, I had US civics and history classes in my grade. Now, you don't take until the 12th grade. How many of our kids are remaining until the 12th grade? How are they to be educated, be able to continue what we're starting to do?
Yeah, and her question is, is education, you know, is suffering and especially in the ideas of our constitution and what it means to be an American. And that, remember last, a little while ago, I said, "I hope." This is in every kid's textbook within the next 10 years. Because this, I think, is a very simple way of defining the greatness of our form of government and why we should stick to it. Absolutely, we have failed our students so often. I homeschool my kids. I shouldn't say I, my wife homeschools our kids because our public schools aren't good enough for my or your kids. And we are very blessed and very fortunate that my wife, being a teacher and with my job, you know, we are able to have Christie stay at home and school our kids. And I'll tell you another thing. With our kids going to homeschool, we sent Holly last semester to Community College to take some courses. And, you know, a good transition for her senior year, a good transition from homeschool to big school, center of community. And she got the highest grade in her math class. Thank you very much. And yes, the pressure is on. So anyway, so Luke's going this semester. And the education system, and it's, a lot of it is because we did feel-good things in our education system. We got away from basics, you know, reading, writing, arithmetic. Now I throw in computers for high school, U-Bet, civics. We've gotta do a better job of educating our kids to compete. In the 21st century, there's been a lot of stuff out there on that. I'm running to be your federal-level congressman. And the best thing I can do to help that along is get the federal government out of your school. Send the kids to law school, back to the state, let the states handle it, you know. And, and that's the best thing I can do. So, okay, Frank and Tom, we'll get to you and we'll get, I'll state. We got Frank.
I'm sorry, you didn't get to answer this question, but I want to hear your side of this. What's your stance on farm subsidies as they currently establish? Do you think about that?
Yeah, let me go off on farm subsidies for a little while. Last time I ran, it was in my, you know, my number-one video about how we had this program in 1933 during the Dust Bowl to help out family farmers. Good idea back then, maybe? But that program has stayed alive until 2012, growing into billions and billions of dollars, when we are a long time out of the Dust Bowl. Farm subsidies are on the table, just like my military, just like everything else. And when you have the top farm subsidy-receiving individuals in this country being one of the Rockefellers, Ted Turner, and Scottie Pippen of the Chicago Bulls, there is a problem with farm subsidies. And it has to be means-tested, it has to be targeted. I'll tell you one farm subsidy I like. Is, there's this program, and I'll remember the initials in a second. But anyways, if, say almond farmers, which my family, Christie's family, are almond farmers down in the Central Valley. If they all, and almonds are always harvested in the fall. And so every almond farmer out there is filling their trucks and taking their almonds to market. And every supply, you know, price is based on supply and demand. So they put all the money in to raising these almonds. They grow a crop and they all take it to market at the same time. And that supply outstrips demand and the price goes through the floor. And now they can't make money farming. And so all these almond farmers go out of business and we don't have almonds. So the program is a program that loans money to a farmer for what their crop would normally sell for on the market. And there's details to this that I won't go into, but the idea. So they loan the money so that the farmer can hold on to the crop until the supply kind of meters itself out over the year. And they sell their crop for a fair market value. They're able to make a living. They're able to stay farming. And the American people continue to have that food service. I'm all for that idea. I think that's a good use of farm subsidy, taking care of the family farmer to ensure that the American citizen has a stable, low-cost. that the American citizen has a stable, low-cost food supply. Good idea. The problem with this program is that it's designed for the poor farmer that has to, that can't afford to wait to sell their crop. But the program doesn't differentiate between the poor and the rich farmer. So the rich farmer takes the loan and if you sell your crop back for less than the loan, all you have to do is pay that lower price. So now the rich farmer or the corporation actually gets that loan, goes out and sells their crop whenever they want or not. And they just pay the loan back whenever they want for the lower price, pocket the difference. And if they sell their crop for a profit over what the loan value was, they keep that money too. It, it's your tax dollars. This is what I'm talking about. This is what those in Congress don't get right now. This is your money. You're a normal guy working your tail off to provide for your family, maybe go on a vacation this year and put away some money for, for retirement and they're taking your money, they being the government, and giving it to these rich farmers, corporations, Ted Turner. Does Ted Turner need one dime out of your pocket?
Hell, no.
Then why is there a program that puts your money in his pocket? That stuff has got to be gotten rid of. That has got to be gutted and taken to zero. That's what I think about those. Marcy, you're first.
Okay, um, to hold, what do you think about what's happening with the Second Amendment amendment and then the UN small arms treaty that our Secretary of State is?
Yeah, remember what I said about the 10th 21? Same thing applies to our Second Amendment. The UN has zero bunkers, if you will, to say about our Second Amendment. That is an American right. It's there for a very good reason and it goes back to this curve. Okay, the government takes away everybody's gun, every law abiding citizen's gun. Where are you on this curve? Do you have more freedom or less? Do you have more control of your life or less? You don't have a gun, somebody breaks into your house, what are you going to do? You're going to call the government, the police, and ask them to take care of you. You've got your gun, somebody breaks into your house, you're in control of your security. UN has nothing to say about my Second Amendment rights here in America and that's how I stand on that.
I just want to follow up on the question about the high schools and stuff or how they're not getting any, any teaching. Elena, myself and Bill Beeler were invited to Lynn Hurst High School as a tea party because the kids were asking about the tea party. We went out there, spent all day, February 27th, went to six pots of seniors, got an excellent reception, explaining the guests and why and all, asking a video of them to like to show up to one of the meetings to see what's going on. Since then, the two meetings we've had, the average of about nine kids are showing up and they liked it so much that came to the second one. So they're interested, all they got to do is get the education system to give them the information.
Yeah, absolutely. And Tom, what you said, that's a local deal, right? I got nothing to say about that at your federal level. That's a great idea. Keep it going. Yes, sir.
I have to give you a little information on this one before I ask the question. The Appeal Democrat in an Associated Press article about a month ago with Obama's announcement that they wanted to reduce the DOD budget, the Associated Press released a little byline on the second page of the paper saying that 20,000 Air National Guard were going to probably be losing their jobs. Now, do you think the defense cutbacks are going to lead to another round of ground closures? I went through two.
Yeah, there's two more coming. 2013 and 2015, our Secretary Panetta has announced it. Now, okay, right, national defense is the number one priority for the United States federal government, national defense. We have to spend that money to keep our, our country safe. There is money to be saved in the military. We have still a Cold War strategy infrastructure and we can evolve it into a 21st century meat lane fight machine. And part of it, now let me tell you this, this is kind of interesting. This will be a benefit of Rick Tubbs as your congressman and I will be happy to give this to the winner of this election if it's not me, because it's that important. There is a new tanker coming to the United States Air Force, KC 46. It's a 767 out of Boeing. It's a great airplane. I'm going to love, I'm going to be your congressman, so I won't have a chance to refill behind you. But pilots will love it, both sides. It's a great program and it's going to replace those 50-year-old KC 135s. Now, the Cold War strategy had those 135s in the center of the country to follow the V-52s going over the poles to drop the nuclear bombs on the Soviet Union. Excellent strategy. But the problem is 21st century, we don't have that threat. We don't have that war. We have other wars. That means all our logistical support, wars are fought with logistics. I think it was Eisenhower said, you know, the rookies focus on tactics, the professionals focus on logistics, fighting a war. We have all these receivers, I being one of them, and a C-17 that are on the coasts, ready to go wherever they need to go in the world. And so if we put all those new tankers in the center of the country following a 20th century strategy, we're going to waste a lot of money in the military flying those tankers from North Dakota through Oklahoma to the east and west coast. Those tankers need to go where the receivers are. They need to go on the coasts, Travis Air Force Base, Beal Air Force Base, Maguire on the east coast, other bases out there and we need to put them out there. We'll save billions of dollars in gas without losing any capability, any soldier, and those are the smart things we need to do. And when you have somebody who understands the military the way I do, I can get in there and fight for smart cuts versus just the broad cuts. We do have cuts coming. It's a peace dividend, you know, but they have to be smart. We don't have to lose capability or increase our risk in the world. We can spend the money wisely and still have an outstanding defense. And some of the cuts that are coming are because we do not have the expertise or the people that can articulate the solutions the way they need to be articulated to win the argument. And that's a benefit that you'll get with me as your congressman.
It's my understanding with the open primary that the designation, the party designation may or may not appear next to the candidate. According to the elections office locally, at least with the local elections, it's all up to the candidate what they want, whether or not they want their party affiliation next to their name. And if they don't specify that they want their party affiliation next to their name, it won't be there. Is that your understanding?
You know, I filled out all, yeah, her question is, is a party, the can, the new rules with the open primary, the candidate can specify or not their, their party and to show up on the ballot. I know when I filled out my paperwork, I put down Republican in that category, but it was not explained to me what you just said.
That's what she told me.
Yeah, and so I, to tell you the truth, I don't know. If, if Republican shows up next to my name, that's fine. The other thing is, is going back to what I was talking about, I mean, one of the things that I consider very important is I'm getting out here, I'm letting you know who I am and what I'm running on. And I'm not telling you I'm a Republican in my flyers or on my website. I'm telling you about the solutions I have.
I understand. May I go further?
Sure, sure.
Okay, the competition is running some pretty fat ads on television, okay, right in on this horse and the pole. And it doesn't say what party he is with either. And because of name recognition, it's very possible that that other candidate might garner more votes than you, only because people not in the know are going to vote for what they see or the name recognition. But I, we're being registered voters here and we're having voters come in every week changing parties to the Republican Party. Hopefully, hopefully they're smart enough to know who their candidate is.
We got a little million Democratic.
And what you're saying is good. Yeah, and, and I think you make a good point, especially with your background and what you're talking about. And I really do consider that my responsibility to get out to the voter and let them know who I am, what I'm running on. And if John Garmendy is not willing to do that for the same reasons I am, because this district is a toss-up, all the better. Because I really do want to win your vote on the ideas and the solutions that I'm providing and vice versa for Garmendy. And if people are voting on that, I think we win all day. If party matters, it again is my responsibility to get out there and let you know I'm hoping. I, I'm more than happy.
You don't have to tell us.
Yeah, I know, I know.
People that vote for me to know.
Right, and, and some of that is going to happen and that's part of the process. It is my responsibility as your candidate to get to those voters and let them know who I am, what I'm running on. And, and so I don't see that necessarily as a barrier. I know there will be some of it and that's okay. But I'm going to get out there and I'm going to talk to you and I'm going to get that. You know, one thing in my last race is what I learned in that district was that everywhere I went, I was winning votes. Everywhere I went, people came back to me and said, oh, we love you. That's great, we're going to vote for you. And then I lost 122 to 57,000. Like, ooh, everywhere I went, people said they were voting for me. How did I lose by so many votes? And it was that name recognition. They didn't know who I was. I didn't get to enough people. And so this time around, I am getting to just about every possible person I can. So it gets to that again, it's my responsibility. Whoa, 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 wait a minute. Let me transition back to what I said in the beginning. I can't do it by myself. I can't do it by myself. And I, I will answer a few more questions. We're getting, I know, I ate 30, but I'll, I'll answer your questions. I'm just going to interject one thing here as you think about what you're hearing again. Go back to asking yourself that question. Do I want Rick Tubbs to be my congressman? And if that answer is yes, then I'm asking you to sign up and help me because I cannot do it on my own. I need your help and I've got all kinds of ways for me to help, from making phone calls, delivering flyers, giving me money, doing office work, all kinds of things. And we'll get to that at the end. But I'm going to just put that plug in because I can see people want to ask me questions. Yes, sir.
Okay, you get on a little bit of a bank. What do you think about a National Day of Prayer?
National Day of Prayer? You mean for the Christian religion?
Yes, the Christian religion.
What about the Jewish religion?
Well, they can have one too.
Or the Muslim?
They are.
Or the Buddhists, right? This country was founded on Judeo-Christian principles. It is throughout the writings of our founding fathers, yet they still respected the individual right of freedom of religion. And having a National Day of Prayer, I think, is an excellent way to acknowledge our Creator that is on our money, in God we trust, in our national anthem, in our Pledge of Allegiance. In our Pledge of Allegiance is what I was trying to say, in our Declaration of Independence. I think it's an excellent way because our rights are not man-made. We don't believe that in this country. We were founded on that. This country is based on those inalienable rights endowed to us by our Creator, which means we aren't the final authority, it goes above us. And a National Day of Prayer that is open to all religions, and if you're an atheist, that's fine too, your prayers are silent. You know, I, I think it's a great way for this country to acknowledge what we, where we believe our rights come from and it's who we are as Americans and I think it's a great thing.
Yeah, well, just a little follow-up. Of course, last year, the National Day of Prayer was omitted, yet there was one, or the most one. And this is, this is something that should definitely be addressed.
And I'm aware and that's why I say I'm for a National Day of Prayer that is open to all religions, including the not. I mean, the National Day of Prayer is an excellent idea, but not any particular faith-based, it's just an American culture, an American tradition, an American acknowledgement that our rights are not man-made, they're made by our Creator and recognizing that. I mean, I'm a Christian. I am, I'm a Bible reader and Christian. But I have friends from many different religions and we get on great. So I think National Day of Prayer is a great, uh, something we should do. First. Committees. Excellent. First, the budget, behind the budget committee. Number one, I'll tell you what, I will, I'll stand on Dana's desk or whoever the speaker is all day long until he puts me on that budget committee. Another one, armed services. Because, because of my background, John Garmendy is on the Armed Services Committee. We have two bases in this district. I think, I think on that committee very well and I think I would be able to contribute to the needs of our country and that, and I think I fit well. Same thing for the budget. Another committee that I have added to that list with this new district is the Agricultural Committee. Now, I grew up in rural farmland and I have baled hay and shovel stalls and, you know, I've worked on farms. I've never owned a farm. My family owns a farm. I am very familiar with farming community because of that, but I'm not a farmer. So there is some things I will need to reach out to my constituents and certainly ask their opinions on whether to educate or not. But I think because my district is so farming-based and so much of the area, I think I owe it to my constituents to represent them on that committee and be looking out for their interests and so agriculture would be third.
What will you do to stand on the issue of marriage?
Yeah, and this is one that comes up a lot in different segments. Marriage is something that in California, we voted on twice and made it part of our constitution. And I believe in the traditional sense of one man, one wife. From a federal perspective though, when I was married to my wife, my pastor said, by the power of the state of California, I pronounce you man-wife. So at this state and time, I put that decision at the state level. Isn't a federal issue. It has not been at that federal issue. It is a difficult thing. I support civil unions. When you talk about the actual holy matrimony marriage, well, first of all, I don't think the government has anything to say to a church on what they bless as a marriage or not, one way or the other. I think that, that's an issue right there. But when it comes to actual recognition of a marriage and the basic unit of society being a family, a family being basically a husband, wife and children, that that's something that we invest in and try to support and try to make sure we produce tax-paying assistance from the outside of that. That is what I'm for. At this stage of the game, I'm willing to put it in the hands of the states and for judges, what was it, one judge and the three panel judges to knock down the state constitution that all of us voters voted on. I think that is not the proper role of judges there. So it's, it's an issue. And, and let me address that. Here's another reason why I wouldn't Democrat decline state votes, because I look at human beings as human beings. I do not look at your race, your religion, your orientation. It is not a factor in how I think of your respect. And so when you talk about something like that, I understand the gay and lesbian community wants to have some sort of recognition of their special relationships and they want to be a part of that. And I, I'm okay, I understand it. But when it comes down to that basic unit of society, I believe it is a husband, a wife and children. And I know that there's variations. I grew up in one. My parents divorced when I was very young, single mom, I told you that story, right? And those are good families too. But the basic unit, man, wife and kids, that's traditional marriage and that's who I support. Colleen.
Again, with regards to that, in reference to our education and now it's becoming, it seems like, it's kind of like the spot out. It just grows and grows and goes and goes. And now they've come down and said it's going to be taught in the schools, in the curriculum, kindergarten, the 12th grade. So to me, it's an invasive demand like EPA. Started out good, going to clean up the smog down. And here we are, you know, EPA getting a lot of water in our wetlands, calling our homes to be very wet.
Yeah, and it gets back to that. I mean, our school systems are failing because they're trying to teach all these other things instead of the basics. Teach respect for humanity and respect for your individual, you know, classmate. That, that is a basic principle I can support, but all this extra stuff, trying to define it all the way down to whatever they're doing. But again, get me as your federal congressman out of your Facebook and you solve it. Yeah, I, I really think that our schools are off trying to social interfere in some places like that instead of focusing on their job, which is educating our children. Respect, you solve all those problems by just simply teaching respect for other people. You know, they talk about bullying in school, terrible, right? Respect solves that, you know? So, yeah, I, I hear what you're saying. Okay, we're getting close to the end. I'm going to start to wrap up. Are there any other burning questions before I? burning questions before I wrap it up? Yes, you have not asked, actually.
There are two executive orders that I've heard out, and I don't think Washington has a capital, we'll follow them up, but I've seen people were on it. And I understand that to follow up to the EPA date is that we can be deported to another country and expatriated. And the other thing is, what is assigned, the remarks is key, says that we can have martial law even at peace time.
Yeah, and her question was executive orders, and I'll talk about executive orders in general, but the two that she talked about is, one stating that we could be exported or expatriated, and another was martial law in peacetime, the President could do that. And this is another one of those things, I have not read these, I'm not familiar with the details, I have seen, you know, I get a ton of emails, and a lot of times, all I have the time to do is read the title, and that's some of the titles I've seen, and it goes back to the basic principles of constitutional American rights, and the President or anybody else does not have the authority to go against that Constitution unless we pass an amendment. So, if these executive orders are contrary to our Constitution, then they are unconstitutional, and we can't follow them, and it'll be Congress's responsibility to make sure it doesn't happen. Now, let me talk about that executive order a little bit more, and this is where our Presidents, President Obama is in this category, but others have done the same. We have to be very careful, and that's why elections matter, we have to elect somebody we can trust with this stuff. When the healthcare issue is going through, you remember this, and I'm gonna beat up one of my favorite issues again, and the House passed a very extreme version, the Senate was trying to negotiate and try to do, a lot of the things were supposed to be solved in conference before the final bill went through, which is the way a lot of health bills go through, you know, Congress passes one, Senate passes another, they get together in conference and figure out what to do, and the final bill goes to both Houses and it's passed, and the healthcare bill is going through the same process. Well, then we had this amazing election in Massachusetts that gave us the 41st Republican Senator, Scott Brown, and gave us the ability to filibuster that Obamacare going through. So, what they did was just pushed the past version of the Senate through the House, and it was so they didn't have to go through conference with all its warts that should've been worked out in conference, and the way that our President got Congressman Stark, the pro-life Democrat, to get on board with his votes was, "I'll write an executive order to make sure tax dollars aren't spent on abortion." Now, you remember the fellow from South Carolina that yelled, "You lie," right? Let's put that aside for a second. I'm not even gonna go to that part of the situation. What I'm gonna go to is how wrong it is for a President to take a legislation that was passed by your representatives, your voice, remember, and then he wrote and signed it into law, and then the President said, "I'm going to carve out this piece of it, and by executive order, say that one doesn't apply." That is not the way bills are supposed to be followed, or laws are supposed to be implemented. That, even though it was maybe something that I would want that happened, no tax dollars to abortions, it was done the very wrong way, and then we find out, oh, by the way, it's not the way it's working. The executive orders are very, you know, we have to watch them, and again, Congress, your voice has to hold the President accountable with our bully pulpit to help not let that happen. Paul, yes?
Rick, how are the Tea Parties helping your campaign? And how can they help here, there's a lot of members here.
Yeah, you know, and the Tea Parties are being very, you know, following their charges, they don't endorse, and, you know, not seeking Tea Party endorsement, because they don't endorse, you know, they're trying to keep their individualism, which is great. The way you can help, and it's the same offer to anybody, is sign up, join my team, get on the list, and if you like what I'm saying, and that, perfect, Paul, did he do that for me? He did that for me.
That shirt, I think you wear it until the Yuba County Republican Party endorses you.
Yes, thank you very much. And really, I am not asking for Tea Parties per se to go ahead and endorse or get on board, but I'm asking the individuals who wanna see me elected to sign up, help me out, let's get going, and let's win some more votes. Sir, do you have one question? Then I'm gonna wrap up.
Do you think, you think the state should ask and enforce immigration law?
Immigration? I'm glad somebody asked it. All right, we are gonna go for another hour and a half. In this country, when you have an estimated, and it depends upon which estimation you look at, 12 million illegal immigrants living here. Illegal.
Thank you for mentioning that.
Paul, illegal. I mean, and first, you gotta back up a second, right? I am not red-faced, I, my ancestors came from Europe. All of us in here, looking close, maybe, little Indians? Some of us, if we have Indian ancestors, aren't necessarily immigrants, but all of us, I would say, have ancestry that immigrated to this country because of the great promise America gives, and we have all lived in American dream because our ancestors came from someplace else. Immigration has made this country great. This country, you have no idea if someone is an American or not by just looking at them. You go to France, you see French people, you go to China, you see Chinese people, you go to the Congo, you see the Congones, I think that's what I'm saying. You come to America, and all those different-looking people can be 100% American. That is beautiful, that is what makes this country great. Illegal immigration. When you have 12 million illegal immigrants, when you have cities thumbing their nose at the federal government as a sanctuary city, when you have states saying, "The government, the federal government's not doing their job, so we're gonna do the job to protect our state people, your immigration system's broken," there's something terribly wrong with it, and it needs to be fixed. And I have come up with a solution that I am offering, and I would love to see this Rick Tubbs plan go forward, and there are some on one side that say amnesty, let them all in, just open up the borders, no restrictions, nothing, let them be citizens. Then there's others that say, "Send them all across the border at the end of the bayonet, they're illegals, they broke the law." Okay, there's, neither one is gonna work, in my humble opinion. So, I'm trying to find a win-win solution for the situation, a practical solution that will work, and that solution started in a hotel room in Kuwait, pardon me. When I'm reading, in Kuwait, there's 800,000 Kuwaiti nationals and 2 million guest workers. It's a tease, if that country can make this work, why can't we? And then I did a little research on Versera Program, and I found out, here's my solution, three aspects to it. One, a guest worker program that allows foreign nationals into our country with an ID card that makes them a guest worker, they come across the border, they live in the sunshine, they are legal, they come, they get a job, they take care of themselves, they take care of their families, great, you're here, we love you, it's win-win, I have work next to them, I know there is a place in our economy for the foreign national, whether it's agriculture, services, or, you know, we're short doctors, we're short engineers, what did we say? We were short welders, they do help our economy, and they fill in. Now, the caveat to that is, if you cannot take care of yourself by having a job, then as a guest worker, you are not entitled to the taxpayer-funded safety net that you and I can tap into in times of need. There is no welfare, there is no disability, no social security, no unemployment. If you cannot take care of yourself, then go home and let your country take care of you. And now the economy will gauge how many are here, and they are an additive to America and not a detriment. And they come and experience the American dream, they contribute, and they get to live in this wonderful country, and it's a win for them. Now, with that, there's a couple of things you gotta do. Now, with that policy, you have to really secure the border, because the only people jumping the fence are the bad guys, the terrorists, the drug dealers, the criminals, the ones that we kicked out because they couldn't behave, and then they're trying to come back in. So, you really have to secure the border, because if it's an immigrant like our ancestors that came and played by the rules and contributed, they can go through the guest worker program. And then the third thing you need to do with that, because you're going to make a difference between an American citizen and a guest worker, you have to close the anchor baby loophole.
Yes.
The fourth amendment was never designed for that French couple, I keep thinking about French, let's say the German couple that came over here on holiday, and her six month of pregnancy, and delivered a child prematurely while they were here, it was never intended for that child to be an American citizen, let alone intended for an illegal immigrant to deliver a child and then have it be a US citizen. That has been misconstrued terribly, and so we have to close that, and we have to make it that you have at least one parent who is a US citizen pull your child to be a US citizen. Those three things put together, I believe, solves immigration for this country in a win for us and a win for those that are looking for a better life for themselves. I think it solves it, it doesn't satisfy every need of both sides, you know, it doesn't, but it's a practical solution that will make things work for everyone, and like I said, Kuwait, 10,000 to 2 million. You know, if we can, I think we can handle 3% of our population, or whatever it is that ends up being, I think we can make it work. And this is bold, this is different, nobody's talking about this, I don't hear this solution anywhere. Yeah, this is what I wanna put forward. And you know what? The Hispanic community is the ones that we deal with on the larger numbers for the illegal immigrants. A lot of times, they don't like us conservatives, they agree with us on all the issues, but they think we're just us Republicans or mean people that are trying to kick all of them out. That's not true, we're not trying to kick them all out. In my plan, we're not trying to kick them all out, but we are trying to make it win-win for both sides and not just a giveaway. All right, you're right, that was bad. You're right, I'm gonna finish up. If you have liked what you have heard today, if you think that you want Rick Tubbs to be your Congressman, I need your help. I want you to sign up back there on the volunteer sheet, I want you to write a check, help me to pay for some signs to give out there, I want you to deliver some flyers, make some phone calls, help me out where you can, definitely vote for me, go on your Facebook page, your emails, all that kind of good stuff, and get out there, tell people about what you heard, and help us win this election. I am so excited, go forward and fight and represent you, and thank you so much for tonight. God bless you, and God bless America.